Would you please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would General Counsel please call the roll? Oh, I skipped item number three, just a second, landing acknowledgement. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup tribe. This acknowledgement serves as the first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. Now, the General Counsel, please call the roll.
Yes, good evening, President Cobb.
Here.
Vice President Vonbright.
Here.
Director Keating.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
And Director Stroger.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And I want to also acknowledge that we have our student board members here tonight, but they will be introduced later on in the agenda. Item number four, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I have a motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community. Six point one, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Old Navy.
Good evening. Good evening, Board of Directors and Deputy Superintendent, or we have two superintendents. Dr. Garcia and Superintendent Santorino. I don't know why I'm nervous, it's been awhile. So it's good to see everybody. I'm here to talk about the Gold Star Community Partner Award. The pandemic has impacted our award. If you notice, this is a little bit smaller and not as fabulous as our last, but we're going to make do. We have a phenomenal partner to recognize tonight. As we always recognize folks that are supporting our students. Tacoma Public Schools recognizes and divides partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, the school district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student success and the academic success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life for the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, TPS recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. In recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students and families, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what's best for kids. Tonight, we have Old Navy to be considered for the October Award. Old Navy became a work-based learning industry partner through the Career and Technical Education Office, led by, the partnership was initiated by the store manager, Angela Battalino. The partnership was initiated out of a conversation between Justina Johnson, TPS Avid and Advanced Programs and Equity Director, and Ms. Battalino as they stuffed backpacks at a voluntary event organized by one of our other community partners, an awesome community partner, communities and schools. The TPS worksite learning coordinator, Chris Sieg, worked with Angela to organize interviews for students from across the district. The interviews were done over a three-day period. They were hiring for their five locations, Tacoma, Lakewood, Federal Way, Auburn, and Puyallup. We even had a student hired for their Kent store, which wasn't in the plan, but our students are fabulous. There were 26 students hired for their six different locations. These 26 students represented all of our high schools and was a very diverse group of students, including one deaf student and one student from our community-based transition programs. Another hiring event is already being organized as we head into the holidays. These students will be gaining valuable work experience. They'll receive a consistent paycheck and high school credits toward graduation through worksite learning. We want to honor Angela Battalino and Old Navy as a Gold Star Community Partner for October 21st, or October 2021. So we're making that recommendation. I know Angela did have to work. She was going to send representation if possible, but she is thankful for the award and she appreciates the partnership and looking forward to further partnership. Any other questions? Did we receive that? Thank you.
Thank you for presenting. That's awesome, 26 students getting hired. And your award is no less fabulous than the previous, it's just different. The gold just really sets it off. We want to thank our partners at Old Navy and look forward to the new numbers from this holiday season hiring too. That's great, thank you. Item number six point two, recognition of TPS Board of Directors as recipients of the 2021 WASDA Board of Distinction.
Thank you. Good evening, President Cobb and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to turn the tables a little bit in how we do these recognitions. Rather than ask you to honor staff, students, and community, we're here all to honor you tonight. For those watching at home, let me explain why. The Washington State School Directors Association, also known as WASDA, brings together a selection panel each year that reviews the work and accomplishments of qualified school boards to identify and award the best performers with a Board of Distinction Award. WASDA will celebrate its centennial next year and sets high standards for excellence for nearly 1,500 locally elected school board directors from across the state. So they know good work when they see it. And if you hadn't figured it out by now, last week, our Tacoma School Board of Directors earned a 2021 Board of Distinction Award. I am pleased to read these names into the record. President Andrea Cobb, Vice President Elizabeth Vonbright, and Directors Enrique Leon, Lisa Keating, and Corey Stroger. WASDA noted that our board was recognized for addressing opportunity gaps, enhancing its own professional development activities, and developing equitable policies. Let me share a few of the highlights from this last year. Early in the pandemic, you set the policy that our district would follow the requirements, recommendations, and guidance of state and local health authorities. And even though health officials have changed guidance often, your leadership has helped us focus on education and rely on the experts to keep our staff and students safe. In daily learning, your leadership helped our district provide each student their own laptop for their academic use in school and at home. Another innovation involved creation of a fully online school, Tacoma Online, in which 4,400 students enrolled in last year. And while our students learned either exclusively from home or in a hybrid model, they didn't go hungry, as an astounding 1.9 million meals were delivered. When vaccines became available to our staff, students, and families at different times, you supported 23 vaccination clinics with our community partners that served more than 4,400 people. Through a partnership with Metro Park's Tacoma, students experiencing homelessness who could have gotten lost in the pandemic received warm meals three times a day, showers, and other basic needs, while our organization provided these students with laptops, Wi-Fi, and tutoring to help them keep pace with their learning. Planning for college and career readiness doesn't stop during a pandemic. So your policy meant that our students continued to have district-funded student access to take AP, IB, SAT, PSAT, and PSAT eight exams. In a commitment to public engagement, you participated in five live budget webinars so the public could have a voice in where TPS directs its funds. And finally, you adopted an equity policy review team to create a space for community voices that can provide the district with feedback on inclusive language and equitable practices in district policies. Those are just some of the highlights. Congratulations to all of you on the board for this honor and on behalf of our staff, students, families, and community, please accept our collective appreciation for your steady and thoughtful leadership.
Do you have any members of the board wish to comment? I'll just, oh, Director Leon?
Sure, I think I'm proud to serve with all of you here. I think this is wonderful work that we do to help our students and staff. We also can't do it without all the staff that work at Admin and throughout all the buildings. So I really appreciate all the staff.
I'll just add, that is easy to support a great team. Like, all the things that you listed wouldn't have come about without the efforts of members of staff and across the district. So I also am proud to serve with all of you to help set the direction and to adopt policies for the district, but also the pride comes from working with a team of great professionals all across the district. So thank you also for the work that you do. Superintendent Santorino?
I just wanted to make a brief statement. I've been working with AASA to mentor folks that are either in their first year of superintendency or they're planning to be superintendents. And we meet together virtually and we taught, and this, the lesson tomorrow is about boardmanship and how to work with your board. And I've just been struck, as I went through it, about how innovative, creative, thoughtful, and hardworking this board is, because it was great to go through all these scenarios and know that we have none of them, you know, that you guys really work together, you're innovative. You keep your eye on the prize at all times. I mean, at the center of your decision-making is always students and our families, more than any other board with whom I've worked. And so I just want you to know how much I have appreciated the time, especially after I see, you know, what the ideal is. You certainly meet that goal, so thank you.
Madam President, I just want to add in there, I know this agenda item was not of your choices. And I can see your eyes as you were going through, I'm like, oh. And so we'll fill up the space a little bit. It's not lost on us that you, just your comments and what I know from each of you individually, that your pride comes from, we are a team. And when I say we, from the living room to the boardroom. We all try, although we all don't agree every day on how to get there, we all try to serve that mission and that intent relentlessly to support every child. And it's complex and it's nuanced work, but you spend hundreds and thousands of hours a year volunteering in that mission. And it's not, it shouldn't go unnoticed. And so thank you for being tolerant of this agenda item, although I can quickly move on. We want to thank you. We want to thank each of you and thank you collectively. Tacoma is great because it is a team, your eye and your value for a team at every level is very important to us, so thank you.
Item number seven, the superintendent's report. Seven point one, introduction of our new student, or our stu-, I shouldn't say new, introduction of our student board representatives.
Madam President, I'd like to bring up Mr. James Neal, who is our Director of Student Life, Athletics, and Activities. And James, I have the clicker. Would you like me to click or would you like to click?
You can click.
I will try to do my best.
All right.
I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, President Cobb and school board members. It's my distinct privilege to work with our student board representatives through the process of application and selection. And each year, we do that in the fall, and we have three new additions to our team. Our purpose of this is to give student voice in this place, give students a student leadership opportunity. And our ultimate goal is to help them provide future leadership as productive members of our community. So Dr. Garcia will click through and they'll come up and introduce themselves.
So my name is Kaitlyn Yet, and I'm a senior at Stadium High School. I wanted to be a student representative on the board to learn about the processes that go into making important decisions that affect students and staff, and also being able to advocate for my fellow peers.
Thank you, Kaitlyn. And welcome back.
Hello, I'm Tasia Watson. I use sheer pronouns. I'm a senior at SODA. And I joined school board because I think student voice is really important. And I'd also like to develop my voice and my experience advocating for students more professionally. And so I'm really grateful for this opportunity and I'm grateful to be here.
Thank you, Tasia.
Hi, I'm Shida. I go to Sanmi. I really wanted to join the student board because I wanted to be more involved into my community. And I wanted to push myself out of my comfort zone and I really think that this is going to help me learn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, hello, everybody. I'm Terri Quinn, I'm a junior at Tacoma. I wanted to, I was interested in joining school board because I'm very serious about honor about students. I feel every student should have. And at my school, I'm a very proud advocate of it, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Madam President, I think you're going to, you and your colleagues are going to be blown away. We've had some interactions and opportunities to dialogue with many of our students that are here tonight. And their voice will be heard. They will help push us to continue to strive for greatness, and we're excited to join them.
Can we give them a round of applause?
Yep.
We, and just, we had a chance to meet each of these students just ahead of the board meeting. And we're all excited to have you here and really thankful for you dedicating the time out of what we know are busy schedules to spend time with us on these Thursday nights. We welcome your voice, we appreciate your voice, and we really wouldn't ask you to be here if we didn't value it. So please feel free to chime in when you have comments or you feel like there's input that we need to hear. And in particular, we want to figure out ways to engage you in our policy review process. We've recently added the addition of community voice. We want to make sure that we get some student voice in that process too. So we'll be talking more about that and just other ways to engage you in the work of the board. So thank you again for being here. Okay, we will move on to item number eight, staff reports to the board. Eight point one, career and technical education, Perkins Five and CTE four-year plan.
Thank you. Mr. John Page, please.
We're on, good, thank you. Hey, good evening, President Cobb, members of the board, Superintendent Santorino, and Superintendent Garcia and student representatives. Thank you for allowing me a chance tonight to tell a little about the story of career and technical education here at Tacoma Public Schools. My name is John Page and I serve as the Director. So the first slide here, I do want to recognize Terry Harris, Assistant Director in CTE. She and I collaborated on this project. You'll hear more from her tonight as she presents with Director Neal. Want to call attention to the first slide there, our partnership. It's with the Southwest Washington Pipe Fitters Local 26, sit down in Lacey. These students in the summer program earning their industry-recognized credentials in scissor lift, OSHA 10 safety, and the partnership with Graduate Tacoma. And it's a remarkable program, but I think that's a great place to kick us off, talking about some of our innovations. I'm going to try to work through our slides set tonight. What I'm going to ask of you tonight, I'm going to share some things, and at the end of the slide, she'll ask, you know, a motion and approval to meet our OSPI compliance requirements to submit the Carl Perkins Grant, now known as a Perkins Five Grant, and then the acceptance of our four-year plan. Both of these items have been reviewed, approved by our General Advisory Committee, which includes our community representatives and our industry partners. So our alignment you'll see tonight is with the strategic plan goals of academic excellence, partnerships, and safety. And we really focus on several of the benchmarks that we may usually report to you and our community. The readiness for life after high school, which is our industry-recognized credentials, our verified acceptance to next institution, known as VANNY, and then our high-risker courses, known as CTE dual credit. Tonight, as I'm sharing slides, you're going to see an overlap with the slides. And that's because CTE, our mission, our goals, and our planning, you'll see that overlap in various programs as we go about the work. So the Perkins Five Grant, CTE is a federal program. It's administered by the United States Department of Education. It's non-competitive, it's based on our K-12 student population. This year's grant amount is $266,352, which is approximately 1.5% of our total budget. Our total budget in CTE this year is right around $17 million. What you see here are the program standards of the federal program of CTE. Now, I'm not going to read through all 16 of the program standards, but that's what supports up when we talk about high-quality CTE for all in Tacoma. And what you'll see from the top down is what our General Advisory Committee has recommended to us. And that is put priority on equity for all kids, not only to access, but to succeed through completion of the programs. You see the CTE dual credit, which supports the college-bound culture. You'll see the industry-recognized credentials, CTE student leadership clubs, CTE advisory committees, and then the verified acceptance to next institution, okay? So 16 program standards, and you can see our priorities there. Now, the next three slides are going to fit together and tell a little bit more of the story of CTE, parts of our journey, and where we're headed. The Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment, CLNA, is something I'm really proud of our team. We put it into Microsoft forums and we surveyed over 1,100 people in our community, students, parents, partners, and team members. And if I took a look at the two bookends, it's about improving equity and access for students. And it's also has a component about recruitment, retention, and training of CTE teachers. Now, in between those, the student performance, I've given you some idea about VANNY, CTE dual credit, industry-recognized credentials that fits in there, and then aligning our scope and sequence of our programs. Okay, so these next, these three slides fit together. Our four-year plan is an OSPI requirement. You'll see those things listed again, with our priorities, the dual credit, the leadership, advisory committees, paid work experience, in-demand career pathways, professional development, small capital projects to continuously up, improve and upgrade our facilities and our equipment to industry standard. Whoops, I'm going to go back one slide because I kind of jumped the gun there just a little bit. Some of you got a peek at it. And we often talk about student leadership in the clubs and the value of expanded learning opportunities. It's something that you, as a board, I have really gone to appreciate, the challenge of expanding after-school activities for kids. And you're going to hear more from Director Neal and Assistant Director Harris later today on, tonight, about the expanded learning opportunities. But I think in our guts, from our own experience as students in the K-12 program, as we watch kids succeed, I think we know here the importance of being engaged in learning beyond the bill. So I want to show this slide. Some of you may have seen this slide. It was presented to us administrators in Tacoma about five or six years ago as Assistant Superintendent Toni Pace and her team when they planned out the Summer Institute, Leadership Institute for Administrators here in the district. And if you look at it, if you look at the crossbar along the bottom axes, it tells the number of clubs that students are involved in and what the impact is under grade point average. And I think we know this in our hearts. But this was data conducted, the research done in 2008, and I believe it holds true to this day. What catches my eye is that GPA of a 2.5 and a 2.9. And what it shows is the difference between a kid being involved in zero clubs and being academically deficient with a 1.9 GPA. If they're involved in just one after-school activity, their average GPA goes up to 2.5. Two activities, 2.9, okay? And with those come the opportunities. When you break the 2.0 mark, now, if you're income-eligible, you're eligible for the college-bound scholars. That is the scholarship in Washington State that removes the barrier to college tuition to any one of our organizations across the state. That's how important our clubs are, our CTE leadership clubs and all of the activities that we support. Okay, I know you want to look at that slide. It stares out to you, at least does to me. We looked on, you'll hear more about Summer Jobs 253. It's something that the board has supported for years in Tacoma in partnership with the city of Tacoma and our other business partners. We've broken it into three components now to respond to the COVID safety measures. We still have the employment component. We expanded the community service and leadership. And then the industrial credentialing, which I showed on the opening slide, is one example of our summer credentialing program. I think everybody in the room is aware of our, it's really an award-winning, next-move internship program where students in Tacoma have access to unpaid internships across the community. And then our student leadership clubs. So each one of our CTE classes, each one of our CTE teachers advises a leadership club after school. So CTE is a seven through 12 program in all of our middle schools and each of our high schools. So students have an opportunity to get involved after school and extend their learning. Something I wanted to share briefly is our, the graduation pathways. You'll recall that two years ago, that the Washington State Legislature passed House Bill 1599. I should say they amended it. It provided additional options to meet the readiness for after-high-school state requirement. Prior to House Bill 1599, students were required to pass high-stakes testing in math and English language arts. The legislature provided additional options, okay? I'm going to show you a slide in a minute here, but I want to prep you a little bit in advance. What it says about CTE as one of the eight options is that if a student completes two or more credits in a program area of CTE, that will fulfill the state's requirement for readiness for after-high school. Within that option, it's requirement that industry-recognized credentials are available to advance. What it says about CTE as one of the eight options is that if a student completes two or more credits in a program area of CTE, that will fulfill the state's requirement for readiness for after-high school. Within that option, it's requirement that industry-recognized credentials are available to the students and that CTE dual credit, college credit, it's a requirement to execute that option, okay? So you look up there, there's a pretty big number. 69% is over two-thirds of last year's seniors qualified to use this option, CTE course sequence. They could have fulfilled the option either through the math, English language arts, the Smarter Balance Assessment, the cut scores for SAT, the ASVAB scores, eight different options. I want to share only on the one of CTE course sequence, two-course option, okay? So what our General Advisory Committee has done in CTE is wanting to look at student data, okay? So how are our students doing? So I'm not going to put out numbers, but I wanted to show you a quick percentage, and then this is my last slide here, okay? The first bar talks about our demographics of the class of 2021. Reading left, right, 14% of the students are black or African-American, 11% Asian, 1% American Indian, 20% Hispanic, 2% Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander, and 11% other multiracial, and 41% white. If you look at the bar, the second bar, it shows the demographics of our students that met, they qualified to meet that standard. And what our advisory, this is a representation, I believe, of our district. It's collectively a celebration for everybody here and our Board of Directors that our numbers right there shows that our kids have access. It's very similar across all of the race, ethnic groups. Okay, I think what, I'm going to finish here, and this is my last slide. And this is what I wanted to ask of President Cobb, would be for a recommendation to approve the Perkins Five and our four-year CTE plan.
And that'll actually come in Agenda Item 14.1, the official, right there. So this is a preview of that recommendation, and we welcome questions for Mr. Page.
Thank you for the presentation tonight. Any questions from members of the board or comments? Vice President Vonbright?
I have a question for you, and thank you again for this wonderful work, John. And it's really great, the work that your team does. And CTE is such a solid piece of the puzzle, as exemplified by this amazing slide that shows the 70% basically of the student body and that it's evenly distributed. How does that number relate to the number from 2020 where 55% of the seniors actually graduated with a, with at least one industry-recognized credential? So, I mean, it's a piece of the bigger CTE puzzle, but I also thought that was interesting, how many of our students, and I don't know what the number is for 2021, but it was for 2020, which was a year we were grappling with COVID. We actually had over half of the students graduating actually having an industry-certified, a recognized certification. And so how does that play into this other slide of the 70% having this variety?
Thank you for the question, Director Vonbright. What it is, is Tacoma Public Schools, and with your support and leadership, has positioned us for the industry-recognized credentials that we've been working on this for 10 years in this district. So when the legislature amended House Bill 1599, our shift is already in progress, okay? We were ready to execute. We were ready to execute on that graduation pathway. So that's a, that's a big thank you to you for our kids.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Sina, thank you for the report. Oh, Director Leon?
So, and we've talked about the importance of these skill sets regardless of where they go in the workforce. I mean, they've, it's so valuable, as you've, we've pointed out here, to have the skills to get these jobs without a four-year degree, but also with a four-year degree. You can get, this is still very valuable, so it's valuable for all of our kids. So you've done an amazing job with your department, so thank you very much.
I'll be sure to tell them. Thank you.
Madam President, and Mr. Page is leaving the mic. With, if you know Mr. Page, that's oftentimes not an easy task for him. But I do not want him to walk away without publicly acknowledging that, Mr. Page, we're celebrating that he has decided to retire here in the middle of the, the end of the calendar year. And Mr. Page has been a dedicated educator in Tacoma and the state for many years. He has led with pride, with integrity, and honesty. He has relentlessly tried to put kids first while simultaneously supporting staff. And we are deeply going to miss him, and we are extremely grateful for his service to our profession. So if you would just indulge me in giving him a little round of applause before he sneaks out.
I didn't know if we were going to do anything like that tonight.
Either did I.
I do have one more comment then. I think that when you have a great leader in a role for a long time, sometimes the change can be scary because that leader has a strong vision and leads with the commitment and dedication, and you wonder what's going to happen when they're gone. But one of the things I just want to thank you for, John, is just not only just leading by your charisma and personality, but creating systems and instituting and operationalizing things in ways that are sustainable beyond your leadership. So I think that's the best gift that you can give the students and staff of the district. So I just want to thank you for not only just the vision and the commitment to the work, but for stewarding and shepherding this kind of commitment moving forward. So thank you. And I don't know what you'll do next. I know you're going to be doing something, but thank you for the time that you've given to our students and our staff in Tacoma.
Thank you.
We will move on to Item Number 8.2, Summer School Report, Title One.
So Mr. Neal is going to join us again, and we have an annual Summer School Report. And just to remind folks, I have to remind myself, two years ago, we didn't have summer school because of COVID, and then we were able to bring summer school back. And it was definitely impacted still because we're still all battling the COVID pandemic. So as we're listening tonight, I ask that you have that, that grace with us when you say, well, what about this? Or how come we did this? We were, we were trying to get a service to our kids and our community as fast as we could, and we're excited to report to you some of the progress that we made, some of the lessons that we learned, and how we'll carry those lessons forward. Mr. Neal?
Thank you, Dr. Garcia, and thank you, President Cobb, and board members, again, for having me. And I'm presenting today on behalf of Title One. The student, the Athletics and Activities Office is the operational side of summer school, and we help support that. And so I'm here to present on what we did this summer in partnership with other departments. I have a very small graph that is hard to read. I'm now recognizing that shows our numbers of participants this summer. And so the school board has those in front of them. But you can see that all the way to the right, in 2021, we were back in a sense of serving more students. As in 2020, we only served a very small amount of our students, about 3.4 percent. And most of that, all of that was virtually. And in 2021, this last summer, we served seventeen point five percent from K through 12 in multiple programs. Those summer programs made up, again, from multiple departments and have some fun names, and I can explain those if you have any questions. But we host a camp discovery in elementary ages for both Title One students and students that also qualify for ELL services. The Special Education Department runs extended school year programming for elementary students. Our elementaries and middle schools all hosted site-based Title One programs. Those were programs based on funding that had been remaining when it came to the end of the school year. As you know, we didn't host in-person learning the entire year. So at the end of the year, there was some remaining Title One funds at elementaries and middles, and they hosted some site-based programs. Jump Start, which is a transition program that we offer to new, new families in kindergarten, and then transition programs for fifth grade moving into sixth and eighth grade moving into ninth. The online credit retrieval at all of our comprehensive high schools. And then lastly, the CTE Program Summer Jobs 253. Our Camp Discovery Program served over three hundred kids at elementary age. We had a return to in-person learning. The grade-level themes are animals, transportation, and space. They do research on that, and then they do a research paper and presentation on that. And they build that their entire time that they are in class during the month of July. The classes had a ten-to-one ratio. We serve students going into third, fourth, and fifth grade. And those students were identified by Title One LAPS specialists in the school building and nominated through that process, and parents registered their students. Oops. The credit retrieval at the high schools done through Edgenuity Online. Our high schools, each high school has a kind of a special way that they support that, depending on the needs of their students. But they identify staff at a coordinator, and they, they send an email or a letter out to all of our credit-deficient high school students through the school counselors. Students register through that. And this is our eighth year doing it. We had over six hundred and thirty-nine participants. And classes were recaptured in those content areas you see there: language arts, math, cultural studies, science, and other electives. And I'm going to bring up Terry Harris. There you go.
Thank you, Director Neal. You got the clicker, though.
I'll do the clicker.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you about our Summer Jobs 253 program. I'm the Career and Technical Education Assistant Director. My name's Terry Harris. Members of the board, Dr. Garcia and Superintendent Santorno. It's my pleasure to talk to you about our Summer Jobs 253 Community Service Program first. Even during COVID-19, Career and Technical Education expanded programming in collaboration with the city of Tacoma. We had a hundred and fifty-one students from our schools here in Tacoma. They chose community service and leadership projects. They completed them all across the city. They were chosen by the students. They ranged from cleaning up parks to serving in food banks. They also earned credentials in financial literacy, and they earned a thousand-dollar stipend as well and high school credit. So I was able to attend one of the paycheck pickup days. There were three of them throughout the summer. And the students were so enthusiastic. They were inspiring. I loved hearing their stories. And one of the highlights was watching the parents on the sidelines. These were the students, sometimes their first paychecks that they'd gotten, so that was pretty fun. And our students completed six thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight community service hours across our city of Tacoma. Next slide. Our Summer Jobs 253 Industrial Credential Programs. We had three of them. We scaled down a bit because of pandemic, but all of our students who were in cohort 2021 completed. They all earned multiple credentials and high school credit as well and a three-hundred-dollar stipend. And our community, business, and union partners all collaborated and contributed to these programs. The three that we completed were Environmental Services, the Merchant Marine, and Introduction to Pipe Bitters and Pommer.
I think, I think you're... There might be a button on the side that you can... The podium mic?
This one?
Yep.
All right. The Summer Jobs 253 Cooperative Work Experience Program. It's an employer-employee cooperation. The students are doing paid work out in our business and in our community. They are earning a paycheck. They're also earning high school credit. It is unique to our school district that we do this during the summer. We had eighty-four student participants, and they've all continued into this full year and joined hundreds of other students who are earning credit towards graduation. Thank you.
So our final kind of synopsis around our summer learning. Our existing programs focused on targeted students requiring the support, students who receive Title One and LAPS services, credit-deficient students in high school, students who receive ELL services as well as special education. We experienced an increase this number of students that we had served prior, to the prior year, but we're not quite back yet to the level of service that we had prior to 2019 and 2020. Oops. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Director Stroger?
I think that Edgenuity is a great resource for our young people, especially when paired with, with the proper teacher to assist a young person through it. I know you might not have an answer to this question, so if you don't, it's all good. But do you have an idea of the number of young people that enrolled in Edgenuity to retain credit? That actually retain credit?
Yeah, so we don't right now. So unfortunately, our system at the beginning was a little wonky, and so that all of them are kind of in different buckets. We can certainly go and pull all that information, but we have a plan for next year so that they're all in the same bucket.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to just get an idea of, put that in nice information.
It's a great question.
Just as a follow-up, and then I'll go to Director Leon. Do you have a sense of what that rate was in previous years? Like the percentage of students who attended credit retrieval and the percentage of who attained it?
I do. I have it in my previous presentations, but I don't have it memorized.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Director Leon?
Yeah. I know we had limitations in number of staff and how many kids we could enroll, this past summer potentially, let's say, prior to pandemic. Do we normally have space for all the kids that want to take summer school classes? Not everybody is recommended, but what if a parent wants them in there? In normal years, do we have that space?
In normal years, we have. One of our challenges this year was, was staff.
Right.
Yeah.
Good.
Vice President Baumreit?
Yeah. About, you know, the Summer 253, I know that sometime, this year in particular, the internships because of the COVID and last year as well, that they couldn't necessarily go physically into an office. And so I talked to some of the kids at one of the check-receiving days, and it was pretty amazing to learn that they sort of had to come up with some, some of their own projects on how that would work. And it added a whole dimension to it that was unusual and also incredibly powerful for some of these kids. They actually had, the ones that had signed up for it or thought they were going to go do something, and they were just like, yeah, I'm just going to go work in this office. And instead, they ended up changing how, how services were delivered in their communities. And it really, the light in their eyes were just, it was shining. So I'm hoping, and this is just a suggestion, is that, you know, how we can kind of learn from that experience and, and couple with the, the opportunity to work with mentors and leaders in the community, but also allow or empower these kids to create space for their own creative community service. Because I think that, that the two together would be even more powerful. So it's just a thought.
Thank you.
Were you going to say something, Dr. Garcia?
Yep, and I can wait.
Director Stroger, did you have a comment? I have one comment, but I, well, I have a comment and a question. My question to follow up on the summer job, no, my comment to follow up on the Summer Jobs 253. I also got to participate in a check pickup day. I was taking my niece to pick up her check. And I will echo, like, it was just like great to, for her to be able to engage in a project and to get those resources over the summer. And I, what I think is really great about it is the fact, and you mentioned this in the presentation, but the pairing of the financial literacy with, with these paychecks. I think that setting students up for thinking about saving, thinking about managing their resources at the point when they actually have something to manage is good timing. So I, I appreciate that dimension of the program with that focus on financial literacy to go along with the thoughtfulness that they had to put in around what projects that they would do and then the opportunity to receive the check. But my one question is just about the enrollment. And what's your sense of the timing of the year? Will you have a sense of where we're trending in terms of trending towards? What kinds of program options we'll be able to offer this summer? I know, like, all through COVID, things have just been continually changing and based on just what's happening in the community with the pandemic, we've had to adjust. But what's your sense right now about what the scope of programming options will be? Or what point in the school year do you think that we'll have, be able to make the firm commitment to what the offerings will be?
Spring.
Yeah. Our, our planning is scheduled for January and February.
Yeah.
At that point, you know, we work with the Title One Office because they're the funder, and we sit down with them, and we start to find out at, at that point, what are some of the funds that might be available at that point in the year? And how can they be resourced? There is, there are funds set aside already for some of the summer school programming that you already see there. But if there are surplus funds that can be dedicated, programs do increase. And we, we plan to announce and do registration during the month of April.
Okay.
And last year, that was probably about mid-May. So we, we plan to be April 1, registration is open for programs, and they're announced.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
We try to work with our community partners. That's one of the things that we always are trying to do. There's some signature programs that we will always plan to do unless there's no demand for them, right? So the Camp Discoveries, the Summer Jobs 253, the Edgenuity with a, matched with a teacher. And so what we try to do then also is, is match what can we expand on and what's new, what's relevant. And so that's, that's spring timeline. But families can start planning that we, this is part of our framework. When you look at those numbers, five thousand kids in one summer. That's bigger than a lot of school districts in our state. That doesn't happen without all of our amazing staff, whether it's custodials, folks, nutrition services, and I know I'm going to miss somebody, and so forgive me, transportation, our amazing, wonderful pair of educators and classroom teachers that in the middle of a pandemic, our administrators, our office professionals. These folks all came in and said, I'm exhausted, but I know this is important to kids, and we're going to keep on going. I'll remind us always, we didn't even have guidance until late spring whether or not we could do this. And so I want to go and thank each of them, and I can't, so I'll use this opportunity to thank all of them for, thank you, for going out there and putting yourself in a space to help kids. We will continue to do that every day, every summer. And I know that folks are tired in the field, and I know that's because they continue to work and answer that, that bell ringing every time. And so we're extremely grateful for them. The last thing I would just want to add is, is, you know, we use the term credit deficient. And I really, as I was listening to that, I struggled a little bit because our kids have to meet rigorous graduation requirements. The state requires our kids to earn twenty-four credits out of basically twenty-four options. So that's a real challenge sometimes if you have something in your life that doesn't go right in there. And I just want kids to know and families to know that we'll be there if something doesn't go right. Although we use terms like deficient, you're not deficient. You are where you are, and we'll just keep on working with you. So kudos to those kids. I think there was, when I was looking at the numbers, there's approximately six hundred and thirty-nine kids in the high school programs. Most of our high school programs are served by Edgenuity, and so we'll get you that data about the success rate there.
Thank you. And on this item in particular, I want to pause and just make space just in case any of our student board members have any comments about summer program options. Again, no requirement to comment, but I just want to make the space. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Neal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Cobb, I just wanted to echo, I didn't have a chance. I just wanted to say, James, like, I feel like this work could have been easily not prioritized given all of the adoptions and constant changes and uncertainty. And I think that it really does speak to the, the level of commitment to serving students in as many ways as possible because this is additional work that staff stepped up to lead in still the similarly challenging, hard, exhausting circumstances. So as I was listening to you in this presentation, I just kept thinking, I just like, over and over kept thinking, this is still COVID. We're still in COVID. And so to me, it's very remarkable. And I know that that happened because of countless staff and, and the efforts from staff. So I just, you know, they're not the numbers that they've been because we are not in the same place that we were. But I, I just am extraordinarily impressed and just commend you and your team. But I just am extraordinarily impressed and just commend you and your team and the staff that served the students that they were able to serve, and the families that trusted us and allowed their students to come to summer school, because I know that there's a lot of trepidation around that as well. So I'm just, I'm really impressed with our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will move on to item 8.3, Benchmark Annual Safety Report on Student Discipline.
So Assistant Superintendent Pace and Director Allen are gonna come up and join us. We struggled with this one a little bit as we were talking about, well, safety, we were in hybrid, and you're gonna see a preview of what that looked like. One of the things Superintendent Santoro has taught us all over the years is we share where we are, the good, the bad, the ugly. And so as we think about our discipline data report under safety tonight, we ask that you understand that we're not saying, oh, my gosh, look at these amazing gains we did. We're saying, these were the numbers based on where we were last year, and so we can have that conversation. So with that, Ms. Pace?
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. So tonight, we're bringing to you our annual report on safety. And just to remind our viewing audience what our safety, our health and safety goal is, its goal for, it states that all schools will create and maintain safe learning environments that promote academic achievement. As we were preparing this report, we were constantly going back and forth saying, well, what were we doing at that time? You know, were we in remote, were we in hybrid? And so we put together a little graph here, I guess you could call it a graph, that kind of identifies what we were doing in that particular year. 2019, 2020, in September, 2019, March 15th, we were all in person. It was like a long time ago. And March 16th, we closed school through June 2020, and we were, we did remote, a remote setting, and we also provided packets. Summer of 2020, we were all remote. Following September through January, we were all remote. In February, we started K1 hybrid, and 2 through 12 were remote. In March 2020, 2021 through June 2021, we were all hybrid. And at summer, we had a mix of hybrid and in-person. Can I take a sec to our present? So we just wanted to state that, because it's confusing for me to remember sometimes whether we were in hybrid or remote or in-person. We have, and then this next slide is a high-level kind of summary slide. Remember that this is, these are grades three and five, and this is the percentage of students with no exclusionary discipline. If you go down to the bottom graph, 2018, 2019, our third grade met our district goal, and our fifth grade did not. But we have to remember, we were in, we were full in-person at that time. In 2019 to 2020, we met in both grade levels, and we were remote in March of 2020. And read my own writing, 2020 to 2021, we met in both grade levels as well. And we had a mixed-up year that year, in remote, hybrid, and then kind of a mix of both for summer school. So that's kind of the high-level picture of grades three and five. And I'm gonna turn this over to Laura Allen, Director Laura Allen, just to give you a little bit more specific information.
Okay. Okay, we're looking at third grade, broken down by student group. And here we can see there's three columns of numbers. The first column was our regular year back in 2018. Then the middle column of numbers is when we went remote in March. And then the report that we are sharing with you this evening is that final, or the third number of columns, column of numbers, that is showing last year when we were, started remote, and then we started coming back in person, hybrid, in February. And as you can see, all student groups for third grade met the district goal of 97%. We did see the largest positive gain for our students in special education that rose nearly eight percentage points. And in fifth grade, what we see here, we have a district goal of 96%, and 10 of the 12 student groups met that criteria. Our Native American students were nine, at 92.3%, and our Pacific Islander Hawaiian students were just shy at 95, a little over 95%. And again, in, for fifth graders, our students in special education made the largest positive So again, for third grade, all 12 student groups met the district goal, and 10 of 12 for fifth grade met the district goal. I feel at this point, before going to the final slide, I would be remiss not to say, this is a different year that we're in right now. And our staff and our students and you and I have been through a heck of a last two years and carry trauma and stress. And that that comes out, that stays in our body even after an event, and it helps, it keeps us from accessing cognition, it keeps us in that fight or flight, that primal brain, and it makes it harder, students could feel a little quicker to frustration with academics. We could all feel like we struggle a little to understand other people's point of view and that conflict resolution. We could all feel like we're struggling to access joy the way that we used to. And I just wanna give a wholehearted appreciation that even with the impacts on our educators, that they are trying to create change and an environment that is positive and safe and inclusive, and where kids feel like they can belong and anchor again, and that they learn some skills. And I just can't appreciate them enough, so. Okay, next steps. So our elementary students do receive social-emotional learning every day on their master schedules, and that's a chance for them to build relationships, and it's a chance for them to learn some skills. Our teachers continue to, we offer trainings for getting along together, our SEL curriculum. Secondary, our middle school and high school students will soon have an opportunity for SEL curriculum for them as well. The curriculum adoption is in process. Over the summer, administrators were trained at Admin Institute on the priority benchmark to have a social-emotional learning action plan, and what some great action items could be for that and goals. And we used SEL student surveys that were taken last spring for data. As part of the Continuous Achievement Plan, schools also take a look at their discipline data, and they look for disparities. And as a team, they come together to examine the root cause and plan steps forward. Thanks to grant funding from the city of Tacoma, we are, we have some robust restorative practice work that we, coaching and training this year for schools. I have to say a shout-out to the DeLong Dragons. Mara Toohy there invited me to join as, an extraordinary bus driver, Ally. She and the students on that bus circled up, and they came together and said, you know, this culture isn't working on the bus, what do we want it to look like? There's no blame or shame, but they all built the culture that they want to see, and it was a really neat experience. We also have grant funding to assist students that are struggling with depression and anxiety and trauma, social skills. Tremendous folks at our sites have whole-child teams, create whole-child teams where they are building a climate and culture that is, where all students can thrive, and staff as well there. And finally, not implanted, but implemented this year, is the Climate Survey and the Healthy Youth Survey. In January, we'll ask families and staff and students to share your experiences with Tacoma Public Schools, because when we know better, we do better. And currently underway is the Healthy Youth Survey. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Any comments or questions from members of the board?
I have a question.
Vice President Bonbreak?
On this, on this last bit on the Health Survey and the Youth Survey, what's the timing on when we'll have data back on, on, I guess, you said the Youth Survey is currently happening?
The Healthy Youth Survey is currently happening. It's an anonymous survey. It is voluntary. And the, the data goes to OSPI, so it is, I'm sorry that I don't know their turnaround time, but I will find out and share that back with you.
And then, and then on the Climate Survey, that is administered by us versus the OSPI?
It is a local in conjunction with CEE, and their turnaround time on data we just met today is 10 days.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do have actually a question. Thinking about Laura, your comment around just like pausing and considering this school year and how this school year is different because now we're, you know, we've been face-to-face and being isolated, I just know that when I've come into group settings, like, I have this adjustment, like a personal adjustment into being around groups of people. And so I'm curious, and I don't expect necessarily a tangible answer, but it makes me wonder about how the adults, when dealing with conflict and discipline, and how to, how to help the adults be able to take a breath, right, and not be reactive and be more responsive when we're all under such, you know, extraordinary stress, and the students. It's just something like, as I, as I was reading through this report prior to the meeting, I was just thinking about that we're all kind of learning how to be together again. And imagine that this report this time next year is gonna have a lot of, it'll just reveal a lot of layers of issues. So I don't know that I really have a tangible thought or question in all that, it's just like, just some, some wonderings.
Yeah, I agree that it's a learning curve, but I think as we all know that the heart and the intent and the care for students is there, and they are going above and beyond to work with students to avoid exclusionary discipline, as we all are very aware at this point of the impact that that has.
Without question, and I was not trying to imply that that wasn't the case at all. I'm just thinking about how like, like, I sometimes still have to pause and rethink about, you know, and just recalibrate myself in social settings. And so just like, there's just so much of that for all of us, and that's just something that I, you know, it just made me, you know, just ponder about that.
I feel it too. Thank you.
Any other, Director Leon?
So administrators have been trained on their integration action plans, it looks, it sounds like, and then teachers, I know some staff, not just teachers, staff have been trained on some of this. Is it, do we have it implemented for, and the goal is to implement these for students to have them, kind of have a, an educational plan around social-emotional learning for each student? When do you expect that might happen?
Even broader than that, it is, there's three action steps that are required in the plan, and one is for the school culture as a whole, the foundational pieces throughout the system. The other is for students, like you said, and the third is for staff, that as we, as adults go deeper down our SEL journey, that we, we see the importance for others. So I expect many have submitted that already, and we're working to help coach the others that have not yet.
Thank you. I, I have sort of a tangential question to this data that is more about this year, and it's probably something that requires a little follow-up, it's not data you're gonna have, I don't think, in your head. I'm just curious about the context around attendance this year. Discipline and opportunities for conflict only happen if kids are there. I don't have a sense this year of what attendance rates look like, and I know last year it was all over the place because we were in different modes, and I'm just, I guess, just as a follow-up, maybe, I don't know if this is like a Friday report asked, but I'm just curious now about how that piece of information, what the context that that's gonna provide next year for this benchmark reports and what things are gonna look like. But I think that is now becoming a kind of a piece of contextual data to try to make sense of all of this too. But thank you for the presentation generally, appreciate your work on the-
Nice one.
Vice President Bonbreak?
Yeah, and I was also gonna say, in that follow-up information, I think we've also had a lot of, a lot of, with our teacher shortages, a lot of subs and other things that also has had an impact on kids. So just, you know, for this year's, it'd be interesting to see a report whenever that data's available to see if that's exacerbated the discipline policy, you know, disciplined number of kids that were disciplined versus whether they were in the same classroom with the same teacher all the time. So that's one. But I was also wondering if maybe the student reps, this might be a good time to ask them if they had any input on this whole topic.
Sure. We can pause and open it up. Again, no pressure, but on these topics that are like really close to kids, you always wanna make time for that if you have any input. And while you think about it, what I, just now thinking about the point that you just made about that other dynamic, I think generally, there's so much data that we could put together to make sense of this year. This year is just gonna be unlike all other years. So I think just as we think about the data and as we think about these benchmark reports, not anchoring maybe too much on any one data point, not anchoring on something that is there or isn't there, it's gonna be important to not jump to conclusions or to jump to scenarios, because it is a complicated year with lots of ups and downs. Staff, students, changes all the time. You're, after I'm asking about attendance and you're asking about another dimension of things, I think it's just important enough for us all to remember that this year is unique.
And for those that are watching at home, I just wanna make sure that we decouple that attendance and discipline are not linked by policy.
Right.
And so we, if we have situations, but I think what I interpreted from your comments is, is that the, the idea of when I come back to school and I'm under so much pressure and how I respond, whether I'm an adult or I am a student, I think we all have to recognize that some folks are required not to come to school because of the Pierce County and the Tacoma or quarantining. So we have all these pressures, and I really appreciated Director Keating, I think the first thing, and what I continue to ask of myself and others, is let's just be aware of the stresses that we are in. Let's try to give ourselves grace and those that are, and meet each other where we are today, and that is really tough when you have, you know, schools sometimes with 14 or 1,500 students as well as a few hundred staff members. And we're all in this together, and it's, it's a tough time, and so that's why I wanted to make those opening comments. I think it was important for Laura to share some contextual things that we recognize, that it's, it's very tense right now. We haven't all been back in, in education. K-12 is one of the few places where everyone is back, and I thank our staff members for what they do on a daily basis. It's not easy. It is, there's oftentimes, we all can have these moments, these moments of that might be the thing that broke the camel's back, if you will. But let's try to breathe, and the exercises and the curriculum and the awareness of just say, where am I today, and how do we work through those? And our kids have done a fantastic job trying to do it. Some of our older students in a number of schools are being role models for the younger students. We're gonna get through this.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Any additional comments from any direction? Seeing none, thank you for the report. Item number nine, members of the public wishing to address the board. Note our alternate protocols. School board members encourage public participation, your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. The superintendent or designated will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at the meeting, you may also send an email to theboard@tcomak12.wal.us. Please contact the board in advance of the meeting for disability or COVID accommodations. Option number one for providing public comment in person, general counsel will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. Please leave your mask on while speaking. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. Do we have any, no comment tonight?
No speakers tonight, thank you.
And the second option for providing comment is to submit written comment. We don't have any written comments submitted tonight, but we ask that if you are interested in submitting written comment, please send it 24 hours in advance of the meeting so that the board has time to review your comments before the meeting. With that, we'll move on to item number 10, the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
I so move.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion's adopted. Item number 11, policy matters. 11.1, second reading of revised policy 3510, associated student bodies.
The district's general counsel recommends the board of directors adopt the proposed revised policy 3510.
Is there a motion to adopt item 11.1?
I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you mind providing a little bit of detail around the changes that we're making and the rationale for the changes?
Yes, absolutely. I'd like to also thank James Neal, uh, for his work on helping us to bring this revised policy forward to your consideration. We began with the revision process in response to the legislature's passage of House Bill 1660 in 2022. And that law, uh, set out the, some funding changes, um, for ASBs. And so we sought to incorporate those changes. I like the purpose statement that we've added, which is that this policy supports the district's goal for all students to have access and participate in extracurricular activities regardless of family resources, including school-based athletic programs and other optional non-credit school clubs as part of enriching a student's educational experience. Student participation in these types of activities help promote their social, emotional wellbeing and academic success. So, uh, we're very happy with the revisions. We feel like we've gone above and beyond what the House bill and the legislature required and, uh, made some revisions filtered through our equity lens here at Tacoma Public Schools. Um, I think that's also really reflected by, uh, one of the additional comments in the policy, uh, or changes in the policy that, uh, procedures to waive any ASB fees for students that, uh, are not able to afford ASB fees will be done, um, in a discreet way in order to protect the confidentiality of the student's family resources or free and reduced lunch status. So with that, we, uh, recommend that the board adopt this revised policy on ASBs.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, I wanna thank you for your work on this. Um, all those in favor of adopting item 11.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion's adopted. Item number 12, financial report. Um, the district's next quarterly financial report is planned for November 10th, 2021. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district's website at www.tocomaschools.org backslash departments, backslash business finance. Item number 13, curriculum and instruction, 13.1, approval of highly capable comprehensive program plan and acceptance of grant funds from OSPI for the 2021-2022 school year.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Director of School Programs recommends that the Board of Directors approve the highly capable comprehensive program plan and acceptance of grant funds from September 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2022. Funding source, Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Is there a motion to adopt item 13.1?
I have a motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 13.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion's adopted. Item 13.2, approval of interlocal agreement between Clover Park Technical College and Tacoma Public Schools from November 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2026.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Director of Career and Technical Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD dash 21 dash 166, interlocal agreement for educational services between Clover Park Technical College and Tacoma Public Schools, November 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2026.
Is there a motion to adopt item 13.2?
I move to adopt item 13.2.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 13.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion's adopted. Item 14, business matters, 14.1, approval of the Carl Perkins Five Grant application for the 2021-2022 school year.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Director of Career and Technical Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve the submission application for the Carl Perkins Five Grant on a four-year cycle with the 2021-2022 school year being year three.
Is there a motion to adopt item 14.1?
I so move.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 14.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion's adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 14.2, approval of alt-electric services not to exceed $350,000 for the McKinley Elementary School Swing School Upgrades Project.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve alt-electrics additional services at McKinley Elementary School. The total value of the purchase order should not exceed $350,000 pre-tax. Funding source, capital projects, bond.
Is there a motion to adopt item 14.2?
I move to adopt.
I second, oh, go ahead.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 14.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion's adopted. Item 14.3, approval of AAMEX, AAMEX, Inc., services not to exceed $220,000 for the McKinley Elementary School Swing School Upgrades Project.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve AAMEX, Inc.'s additional services at McKinley Elementary School. The total value of the purchase order should not exceed $220,000 pre-tax. Funding source, capital projects, bond.
Is there a motion to adopt item 14.3?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments?
Can you maybe just mention what the difference is between these two?
The two previous?
The, the two McKinley Swing School, um, upgrades.
So the, the previous, um, agenda item, we ordered light fixtures to be installed in McKinley, uh, before the start of the school year due to supply chain issues. They arrived two months later, which it caused us to shift the installation to, uh, after hours, which comes at additional cost. This agenda item, we're going to be conducting additional painting throughout McKinley, which comes at additional cost.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 14.3, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion's adopted. Item 15, other business, 15.1, adoption of the 2022 Tacoma Public Schools legislative agenda.
The superintendent recommends that the board adopt the proposed 2022 legislative agenda.
Any, is there a motion to adopt item 15.1?
I motion to adopt.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? We had a great presentation on the agenda and discussion at a previous meeting, so seeing no comments or questions, all those in favor of adopting item 15.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion's adopted. Item 15.2, adoption of resolution number 2102, recognizing October as disability history and awareness month.
I've asked Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Mr. Zeke, Mr. Zeke Edmonds, to come up and give us a little bit of background and, um, share this, uh, recommendation with you.
Good evening, President Cobb, Board, Superintendent Garcia, Superintendent Santorno. Thank you. Uh, this evening, um, first I'm gonna start with just a quick read and then a little bit of background information. Our resolution, uh, for the board for Tacoma Schools, recognizing October as disability history month. Whereas Washington State Legislature finds that annually recognizing disability history throughout our entire public education system from kindergarten through grade 12 and at our colleges and universities during the month of October will help to increase awareness and understanding of the contributions that people with disabilities in our state, nation, and the world have made to our society. And whereas the legislature further finds that recognizing disability history will increase respect and promote acceptance and inclusion of people with disabilities, the legislature further finds that recognizing disability history will inspire students with disabilities to feel a greater sense of pride, reduce harassment and bullying, and help keep students with disabilities in school. And whereas RCW 28A 230 158 provides that annually, during the month of October, each public school shall conduct or promote educational activities that provide instruction, awareness, and understanding of disability history and people with disabilities. Now therefore be it resolved that annually, the month of October shall be recognized as disability history month in Tacoma Public Schools. And it is further resolved that the district will celebrate the contributions, achievements, and history of those with disabilities. Each October, the district hopes to increase awareness, respect, and acceptance of people with disabilities and bring a greater sense of pride to people with disabilities. It is also an opportunity to reconnect ourselves to dismantling barriers to access and inclusion in our schools. To go a little further for us, part of that work not only includes just the getting that information out there in our schools and our publications, but providing that curriculum, resources, materials for our teachers and starting to think through this more in a progression. Where do we want our kids not only to increase in their awareness, but where do they start to learn to gain voice, to become active participants in this to, right, not just in that breaking down barriers, but thinking of equity not as, uh, something we do as a project or an initiative, but it is part of our cloth and it includes all of our students. And it's something that as we engage in the classroom and that conversation and create that space, uh, the team has worked hard to get those materials out there for teachers, but there's still lots of work for us to do. And then how do we leverage with our community partners and organizations to be part of that process for us in the city?
Thank you.
And a point of order of motion to adopt?
Yeah. Um, is there a motion to adopt item 15.2?
I motion to adopt.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Um, this is-
Director Keating?
This is very exciting. Um, I, uh, I know that in, um, there are some staff and I know some school counselors who have incorporated, um, disability history awareness like in their, like, um, uh, bulletin boards throughout school hallways. So I know that there is, um, there are staff that do, but having something that is district-wide and that sort of setting, um, a foundation, um, is really exciting. And I think that, um, it's really easy, um, to not, when, um, you know, with someone like myself who is able-bodied, I don't have to think about certain ways to move, that, that I get to move through the world in a certain way that others don't. Um, and so I think that anytime that we grow awareness around, um, the way that others experience the world, um, benefits us all. So I'm just very excited about this.
Any further comments? Seeing none?
Yeah, I got one more comment.
Director Leon?
There are examples of, of this throughout history. Um, I mean, probably can think of a famous person, Stephen Hawkins, who's a physicist and theorist who's, um, expanding the knowledge base of the world and he's got a significant disability. But also, if we, if the world discriminates against, uh, disabled people, I mean, it's also very easy to start discriminating against all other groups. So we need to really try to fight discrimination at all levels.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, would the general counsel please call a roll?
Yes, President Cobb?
Aye.
Vice President Baumright?
Aye.
Director Keating?
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
And Director Stroger?
Aye.
The resolution passes five zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 15.3, adoption of resolution number 2099, authorizing the ballot proposition number one, education programs operations replacement levy.
The Director of Finance on behalf of the Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution number 2099, authorizing ballot proposition number one, education programs operations replacement levy.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 15.3?
I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about the resolution? And again, we had a pretty extensive presentation about this at our last meeting. So seeing no further questions or comments, would the general counsel please call a roll?
Yes, President Cobb?
Aye.
Vice President Baumright?
Aye.
Director Keating?
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
And Director Stroger?
Aye.
The resolution passes five to zero.
Thank you. Item 15.4, adoption of resolution number 2100, authorizing the ballot proposition number two, technology improvements and upgrades replacement levy.
The Director of Finance on behalf of the Chief Financial Officer recommends that the director, the Board of Directors adopt a resolution number 2100, authorizing ballot proposition number two, technology improvements and upgrades replacement levy.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 15.4?
I motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, would the general counsel please call a roll?
President Cobb?
Aye.
Vice President Baumright?
Aye.
Director Keating?
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
And Director Stroger?
Aye.
The resolution 2100 passes five zero.
Thank you. Um, with that, we'll move on to number, item number 16, board comments and reports. Um, this is a time for board members and our student board members, if you choose to share any reports from what's happening in your world, we can offer reports on any committee meetings we've attended, community events, or just general updates or comments. Tonight, I'll start in a slightly different order with Director Stroger. Any report tonight?
I have a report, just a comment that, uh, I, I'm creeping up on one year of sitting in this, in this seat here. Well, not really in this seat, couple of months in this seat, but, uh, one of my biggest fears was, uh, to, to not get that, uh, Board of Distinction Award from WASDA after joining the board, like, oh, he threw the, threw the vibe off. Uh, but I just wanted to echo earlier that, uh, I, I'm just extremely honored and appreciative to be able to sit up here with you all and I've learned so much and I look forward to, uh, you, you all have, uh, poured into my tool belt to be able to advocate for students every single day. I mean, I'm learning something all the time. So I just needed to say that up here publicly. I appreciate operating up here with you all, Superintendent Santorno, Superintendent Garcia, all of y'all. Um, I just wanted to express my, uh, appreciation to all of you for elevating me. Thank you.
I could, we all could respond to that comment, but we appreciate you two. Director Keating, any reports tonight?
Um, I'm sure there were other things I was gonna say, but I have been up since 6:00 AM Eastern Time and flew across the country and made it here, um, with four minutes to spare today. So, um, I, I will just say that, um, on Sunday, Director Stroger and, um, Director Baumright and I, um, participated in the peace walk, um, with, in the, um, Salistan community and it was, um, there was, um, really, um, a large representation of people across the city that came, um, in support of, um, of the incidences that have happened there and how do we move forward and how do we heal and address violence and gun violence? And, um, it was a really meaningful experience, um, for me to be there alongside, um, so many of my colleagues. Um, and I think that was just last Sunday. Really don't know what time of day it is or what day of week it is. And then the other thing I'll just say, um, tomorrow and Saturday, I will be participating in WASDA's, um, General Assembly, um, where we, um, every school director, I think we have, um, 97% participation across the state of school board directors, um, voting on statewide, um, priorities for WASDA for them to advocate on behalf of all school, um, districts in the state. So, um, we will be doing virtual, um, parliamentary voting, voting, uh, for two day, for the next two days. Yeah. It was really hard last year. It was, it was a lot. But, um, I'm really, I'm really honored to be able to represent, um, us as a board and the district tomorrow.
Thank you. I'll be on call if you need to consult.
I might.
Me too.
Vice President Baumright, any report tonight?
Yeah, you wanna, do you have anything? Director Leon, you wanna go first?
Better, you want me to go first?
Sure. I always go first.
All right. Uh, well, I wanna thank all the staff, um, from getting us to 98% COVID, um, compliance in the district. I think that was amazing. I think it's, uh, a testament to how much the staff cares about their safety and the students' safety. So it wasn't easy. I know it wasn't easy. I know it was a lot of time and work spent by the, the health team that was working on that, but really everyone, uh, should congratulate. Uh, I'd like to congratulate everybody for doing that and for, like, to congratulate yourselves. So, uh, so important for your health to get that, to get that vaccine. I was, uh, at the sidelines at the Mount T game last week. Uh, it was their homecoming. It was excellent just to see, you know, there's no homecoming dances, right? But there are homecoming spirit things happening. But there are homecoming spirit things happening. People are dressing up. People are getting excited. Community pride. I saw a really large-looking pep band in their stands. It was impressive. They sounded good. They might give Lincoln Marching Band a run for their money someday. You never know. They, there have been some COVID closures of some teams intermittently throughout the district. That's just happening. But really, people are not getting extremely sick or very sick from, you know, the kids that are getting these infections are getting usually, most of them on the outside in their home lives and not transferring them in schools. The masks are working, the air filters are working, distancing is working. So thank you for all the staff for doing this hard work. There is a musical review coming up at Stadium High, so Stadium High does a lot of theatrical productions. They have a big musical review coming up. And congratulations to the Lincoln Football Team last week beat Lakes and to win the league championship. So, well done.
Woo-hoo.
Thank you. Director Vonbright?
Yeah, it's been a busy, as usual, couple of weeks, but the one, two things I'll talk about before I get to the big one in J Mac. But the Wi-Fi connectivity project that I've been talking about, where we're, community groups are working together to try and get free Wi-Fi in communities that don't have great access to high-quality Wi-Fi, is moving along and getting lots more partners and really excited about that work. And so we are, we are talking with ways that the school can be, you know, a strong partner in that. And so that's, that's moving forward. The other thing is that several of us this morning did the, did a demo of breakfast after the bell at Roosevelt Elementary School. And it was, it was so magical to watch these kids and, you know, how they interact with each other and how the teachers are creatively using this time where the kids are eating and, you know, getting settled to actually start their school day and use it as teachable moments and have everybody settles right in and gets right to work, but they're also getting their nutritional needs met. And we actually had a great conversation with, we had a first-grade class and a third-grade class. In the third-grade class, we actually had a great conversation with them. And it's, it's, it's a wonderful program, Breakfast After the Bell. And I, I think we see the, the number of kids that, I think we had a report this last week that was talking about how many kids that were actually serving now versus the kids that were, you know, just coming in and going into the cafeteria before, which is, it's, it's much larger. I can't remember the exact numbers, but it's, it's impressive how many kids are getting, starting their work, starting their school day fed, so that they're not, you know, hungry. So thank you to the nutrition team and all of the staff at all the schools and the teachers who are actually stepping up and, you know, making that happen, integrating it into their school day. So that's a big lift, and we understand that and appreciate you so much, all of, everyone who's, who's working on that. And then lastly, I'll just, I'll just say that I've been, you know, talking for ten months about the Joint Municipal Action Committee, which is the Board of Elected Officials from eight governing boards in our community, who've been working together to try and work on a collective vision around building a more resilient and anti-racist community with aligned, you know, initiatives and, and commitment. And we had a big summit of sixty where, for the first time, we really opened it up and invited some community individuals who are working with clients at every different level all over the community. And it was an intense day. It was for a lot of reasons. It started really early, like seven-thirty. We had, everybody was there and kind of in their seats by quarter of eight. And we were there till five-thirty. I mean, you know, five o'clock, I guess it was, that, and it was a long day. And it was really the first day, you talked earlier, Director Keating, about how odd it feels to be in a group of people. And you kind of forget the norms, and it just doesn't feel quite right. And that was part of that experience of that day, too, is we had sixty people in a room all socially distanced. But none of us had sat around together for that long, having a conversation. And, you know, you, you forget, I mean, your attention span, it's hard. It's hard work. And especially when you get hungry, you know, when you're on Zoom call, you just knock off your camera, and you walk into the kitchen, you get something to eat, and you come back. Now, this was intense, and there were very deep and, and complex conversations. And so I think it was really extra hard because we'd just come out of, or not even out of, we were, it was the first COVID experience, post-COVID experience of that like, and I think that added some tension. But I have to, you know, commend all of the people that participated at every level because we really had some incredibly deep, and as I said, very difficult conversations about where we are as a community and where we need to be, and what is that gap, and how do we get there? And, you know, Director Strozier was there as the other representative from the Tacoma School Board, and you may want to say a thing or two about it when I'm done. But, but anyway, it was a productive day. I think we worked through a lot of discord and got to a place of understanding that was really super valuable. And next, by the end, by, I think by the middle of November, we should have the report back from the consultants. And then November nineteenth will be the next meeting of J Mac, where we'll be having kind of a group discussion about where we go from here. I will say that as Chair of J Mac, I am also, I'm also calling, individually calling all of the attendees, the public attendees, to ask them one-on-one about that. I'm joined in that work of calling with City Councilmember Christina Walker, who's the Vice Chair. And so we are trying to reach out and talk to everyone who was there to make sure we hear, really hear what they were saying, and make sure that we get that community voice into what we do next. So, anyway, thank you. Dr. Garcia was there all day and appreciate your attendance. And it was just a magnificent experience. I don't know, Director Strozier, if you have anything to add to that?
No, I think you hit the nail on the head. I would just echo the fact that folks came in with questions, but they left with answers. So it was just an exciting time to, to be together. Long time. I ain't gonna lie to you. That was a long time to be in a room. But, but it was definitely a, a good time spent, and folks walked out with an understanding of what we're trying to do, so hats off to you.
I don't know if, Dr. Garcia, if you had any comments about the day from your perspective? Because the CE, your counterparts were also there from each of the other entities. And, I mean, I think we were all looking at things from a different place, so I'm curious as to what your thoughts were.
I don't know if I have additional comments to, on the day itself, but Director Vonbright, I want to congratulate you because you and your J Mac colleagues, but, you know, there's been a few of you that have spearheaded. This was not an easy conversation on some really heavy topics. It was courageous for city officials to come together and, and not look at each individual agency as right, wrong, or indifferent, but what are we collectively trying to do as a community? And we have a lot of magical things that are happening in our community, and we have a lot of scars to continue to try to heal. And, and it started with a few folks at J Mac, and Director Vonbright was one of those champions. And so I just want to congratulate you on that moment. And then, as you know, Director Vonbright is not stopping there. And so those individual phone calls have already started, and I would say to you that we're in from here forward. So we're excited to be a part of it.
Yeah. Great potential. We have a, we live in a phenomenal community, and that was evident because there were these community folks saying, that's nice that you guys have talked about these great topics, and we've been doing this work, and let's get going, which is perfect. It's just what we needed to hear and wanted to hear. So as elected officials, it's always helpful to know that you're still running to catch up, right? To the people that are doing the work in the ground, but how, how can we get there faster? So thanks to everybody.
Well, before I, I don't have much in the way of report, but before I make a couple of comments, just want to ask if any of our student board members have any report tonight that they'd like to share. Caitlin?
I don't have any official reports, but I just want to say I'm happy to be back. And then this week is Stadium's Homecoming Week, so it almost felt like pre-COVID times decorating the halls and seeing everyone dressed up for Spirit Week. And then after being out for two weeks because of COVID and quarantining, tomorrow's the last football game, also the homecoming football game. So that's exciting. And then also just, I've noticed students like wanting resources for, wanting resources to help edit their college essays or just help draft them. And I think it's important to give those resources like early into the school year because for students who are applying like early decision or early action, or just students that want to get everything done earlier.
Thanks, Caitlin. Go ahead. Come on up, Asia.
Hello, I'm also glad to be here. This is like my first meeting. Some exciting things from SODA is that like we had our Spirit Week this week, and also our freshman and sophomore ASB elections, which I kind of helped implement both of those, so it was fun to see. And I even had other students from other schools, like from, through social media, interacting, saying, oh, I love your Spirit Week ideas. They're so cool. So it was pretty fun and exciting. I knew there was something I wanted to say about the exclusionary, exclusionary disciplinary action thing, but I didn't know what it was until I like sat and thought about it. I don't know like the whole process behind it or anything. But I wonder if we could see those same numbers for like middle and high school? Because I just have a feeling that like those numbers are definitely higher, even though I'm glad with the growth from grades three to five, especially for different groups, I'd like to see those maybe. I don't know what that project means or if it's only for those grades, but that would be cool to see in the future. And then I agree with Caitlin with the high school students, because I'm a current senior as well, struggling with college applications and being like, ah, and like at least my school, we have like one college counselor. And I feel like kind of bad. I always go to her like every day, stressing about college applications. And yeah, it's kind of hard because I know with COVID, it's hard to have things before school starts. But a lot of students are like feeling like a little bit behind, at least who I, whom I've interacted with. But I'm really happy to be here, and I'm glad to see like the behind-the-scenes like process of how school stuff happens and all the projects that you guys are doing. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. And if you get a chance to go back to the agenda that's posted online, and I don't know if you know how to get to the Board section, but if you go on the About Us part of the website, then there's a link to the Board, and you can see meetings and agendas. If you click on the link for the presentation on Student Discipline, if you go to the Appendix, there are middle school numbers there, so you can see those numbers. And your intuition is right. Historically, the numbers for middle school do go up and dip. I think there's a lot of reasons why, but that's the pattern and the trend. Lots is changing and happening with middle school students at that age group. But your intuition is right, that those numbers are there. You can take a look. Maybe if you have questions or you want to talk more about it, we can move back next time. Go ahead. You're welcome.
So I go to Mount Tahoma. For us, it's, we're known for our diversity. But a lot of us are not happy about school anymore, especially upperclassmen. We've went from freshmen to, well, for me, I went from freshmen, didn't have a sophomore year, and came straight as a junior. So for me to sit in here and see the amount of growth, because a lot of students at my school, they don't really know what district does. They feel like they don't, they're not supposed to be in these type of seats or these type of rooms. So for me to go back to, you know, the people I serve, which is my peers, for me to go back to them and talk to them and, you know, tell them about everything, which I kept writing stuff down. I know it's definitely gonna help them see like there's progress, they care, things of that nature. Because for us at our school, there's a lot of tension, especially with staff and students. So just to hear that, that staff and educators are still focused on us, that that's definitely gonna make us, you know, give us a better perspective. But that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Paris. And just to all of you, like one of the greatest gifts that you can give us is going back to school and getting feedback on things like that. So in your reports, there's no like strong format for, for your comments at the end, but you want to give us updates on things happening, like you did, events that are coming up, you want to hear about that. But then also just what's the pulse of your school community? What's the pulse of your peers? So being in kind of that liaison role is a great place to remember. Like if there's a note about something you think your peers should hear, please carry that back. If there's something that you think we should hear, we want to hear that, too. So thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Well, I don't have much in the way of report. I got to go and see Breakfast After the Bell this morning at Roosevelt, too. So it's great to see the program being implemented in action. But generally, like, you know, I'm in reflective mode because this is my second-to-last meeting. So I'll be here with you all for one more meeting. But as we were walking through things tonight, it's just, I think it's part of, you know, you close out a chapter in your life. Things I'm just thinking about is how much we've like continued to grow and change and adapt in the last year and a half, but also the course of the last six years that I've been on the Board. Just so many things have shifted and changed me while they keep getting better. And it's easy to lose sight of the shifts because you just live in the now and the today. But just reflecting on the agenda and the growth in CTE programming, the growth in the summer learning opportunities, which again are not funded, not paid for, so you just have to be thoughtful about all these things, and they take years to get here. And something like COVID comes along and interrupts it, but when we build good systems, we're able to come back. And so it's just great to see the growth over time, but also just the resilience of our systems and policies and procedures and how we keep getting better. So I appreciate all the thoughtfulness and the hard work that goes into getting us to where we are. So I will move on to item number. You're back there. Item number seventeen, announcement of next regular Board meeting. We'll meet on November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at six PM here for our regular business meeting. Just to note that the tenth is a Wednesday, and we shifted to a Wednesday because the eleventh is Veterans Day. So we'll be back here on November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And unless there are no further comments from the Board, we are adjourned.